That we're late. I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's get started. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee? Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor. Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, student, government, student. State your name and your grade, please. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name is Krista Coleman, and I'm a junior, and I'm the Vice President of Student Government.
Hi, I'm Cameron Care, and I'm a junior.
So this month, the variety show took place on Saturday, the third, selling out the CHS auditorium. It was canceled on Friday, the second, due to the nor'easter that made it unsafe for people to come to the show. However, Saturday was a great success, and DVDs of the show are being made and being sold to, and are available. The Student Government meeting scheduled for March thirteenth was also canceled due to the next big snowstorm that caused schools and all after-school activities to cancel and close. We then planned and held a brief meeting after school on Friday, March sixteenth, to discuss our progress in Pennies for Patients and Count Money, make posters for Respect Week, and give each class the opportunity to come together and further discuss spring fling and proms. Pennies for Patients also began on March fifth. To collect the money this year, Student Government created a new system that puts the teachers and their classes in competitions by departments and individual classes, rather than their advisories. In the third week of the competition, each leading collector of each department will be entered into the competition for the title of Penny's Champion. The top-three teachers will receive a pasta lunch with their students and their classes who donated the most. While our goal was to raise $10,000, and with one week left to collect money, we've so far raised 1,300.
This coming month, we will have spring fling right around the corner on Friday, April sixth, 6:30 to 10:30. This year, the sophomores and freshman class have raised enough to, uh, money to hold this event at Twelve Acres in Smithfield. Spring fling is open to freshmen and sophomores, but juniors and seniors can go as dates. Senior and junior proms will be held at the beginning of May. Junior prom is on May fourth, and senior prom is on May eleventh. We will have April break coming up, which is the fourteenth to the twenty-second. The Student Government meeting of April is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. You will also have a blood drive, which will be held right here in this room on April tenth during school day.
So where, I'm curious, where are the locations of the junior prom and the senior prom?
Uh, I know the junior prom is at Venus de Milo in Seekonk versus...
Um, I'm not a senior, so I don't know where senior prom is.
You might get invited by a senior. Okay.
No.
That's okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excellent update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consent, consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, three eight, two thousand eighteen. Special meeting, three fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Approval of minutes for the executive session, three eight, two thousand eighteen, and the executive session, three fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman and Mr. Hess, all in favor. Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the report out of executive session meeting. Report of executive session meeting that we had this evening, three twenty-two, eighteen. There were no votes taken in the executive session meeting, but I do need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor. Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. I have a few things to share with everyone. First of all, I want to, I want to remind everyone that the town hall meeting that was canceled a few weeks ago has been rescheduled for Tuesday, March twenty-seventh at 6:30, and it will be held again at McCourt. Again, that is the town hall meeting on school safety, and we're anticipating that a lot of parents and people from the community will be attending that event. Also wanted to let everybody know that we, we did have students who respectfully participated in the National Walkout on March fourteenth, and I happened to be out there. I, I know that there were also some events held at both McCourt and North Cumberland Middle Schools, but I can report to everyone that the students who participated, and we estimate that approximately 700 students participated in the event, which lasted for seventeen minutes, and they conducted themselves in a polite and respectful way. And I think there's no question that students across this country are having an impact on this important issue. It is my pleasure to introduce to all of you Susan Kelly. Susan is a member of the Lincoln Cumberland Rotary Club. She is a past president, and she has been actively involved in starting an interact club here in Cumberland. And for those of you that don't know, the interact club is associated with Rotary, and it is a wonderful experience for students to connect with members of the Rotary, who, as you all know, some of you may even be members of Rotary. They are business people, politicians, that do a lot to support the community. In fact, their motto is "Service Above Self," which is a wonderful thing. So let me introduce Susan, who has done a great job of coordinating the interact club here in the high school. And there are a lot of students actively involved, and it really is a nice relationship. So let me introduce Susan, and she has a request for all of you. Susan, welcome.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. And obviously, one of the reasons why I'm standing here tonight is because of you. And I am Susan Kelly. I'm our past president of my Rotary Club and a parent of four students here in the Lincoln District, but found the need to expand our Rotary group into an interact group. And as a school committee, you should be extremely proud that you have the biggest interact group in our district. We have over fifty students, and what, and I feel, and I'm embarrassed that I have not been here before to speak in front of you, because it's, I, this is, we're into two years right now of doing this program here at your school. And other, if people that don't know what Rotary is, Rotary is a community-based organization that we meet on a weekly basis, and it's not about just your business. It's really about giving back to the community. And our Rotary group, I became a Rotarian four years ago. They only had women allowed twenty-five years ago. It was a strictly men's organization, but we were lucky enough that we wanted to start this organization here in Cumberland. And we had such a great turnout because the superintendent and our past principal, Alan, supported us, and we have done unbelievable things here in the Orham community. So now we have over fifty students involved with it, and our upcoming event is a yard sale. So as a Rotary group, an interact group, we are required to do certain things internationally. Last year, we did a fundraiser for Africa, and we donated books. So I don't know if anyone even kind of knew that, because we are lucky enough that Tom Ward from the Valley Breeze is one of the Rotarians. So we benefit from him to be able to advertise what the students here have done at Cumberland, because it's just unbelievable in terms of the impact they've had on the community here. So we have an upcoming yard sale that we're going to be doing, and I'm asking for coming here tonight, that we are looking for donations. People are donating here in our community, as well in surrounding communities, and all the donations are going to Hasbro Hospital, as well as an orphanage in Nepal. So we're utilizing, right now, as long as we can coordinate all of this, the facility across the street, and we have Brad Deanhouse Warehouse is donating a trailer that we can store the items over the next couple of weeks until the actual day of the yard sale. So we've actually, in the past, last year, we also, when we did our book drive, we had a trailer that was here at the school that we supplied the books, so that as the time that we were donating things here at the schools, we were able to then box everything up and send them out to Africa at that point. So during the yard sale, we need to have storage for the period of time where people are dropping off the items. So this is what, uh, we've never done this before. This is all new to us. This is the first time we've done a town yard, um, yard sale. We're kind of coordinated with the, what they're doing for April seventh, which is the yard sale for the cleanup of Cumberland. I believe you had, one of the students I just mentioned, they're doing it on April sixth, their cleanup. So we're trying to coordinate some of our interact students to work along with Tom to do the cleanup. But obviously, the objective is to, and honestly, we put our ad in the paper today, and we've gotten at least six calls of people that are looking to donate things to our yard sale. And, you know, we're going to have them do, um, drop the things off, and they stay in the trailer for the couple of weeks. I actually sent to the superintendent, which I can share with the rest of the committee, exactly where the trailer will be on the property. So it'll be kind of set off from where the students are parking.
What location? Where, where's it, where is the trailer going to be?
Next to the swim across the street from where the, um...
Okay. I apologize. And what was the date?
Um, April seventh. Our, um, April seventh is our yard sale. So we have drop-offs on this Saturday and the following Saturday. And then at that point, we're going to store everything in the trailer. If we have, if we have bad weather, we're going to figure that out. We're going to work out something that we can easily take that trailer and bring it to one of the YMCA's. We've already spoken to them about utilizing one of their facilities. Not really too worried about that at this point, but the logistics of it, this is our first year. But in terms of the feedback we've already had, we are like well above what I even anticipated, what I think we can raise for them.
Excellent.
You know, any of your feedback would be great, but I do have to say, you should be extremely proud to have such a great group of students at the high school and from a Rotarian and other districts that I believe in our district, there's only six interact groups right now. They're kind of looking at us as being like, wow, these guys have it going on. So it's really something to be said. And I compliment the school committee, uh, the school having them, their support to make this happen.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Denon.
Um, first of all, it's going to be good weather, because I think we're done with bad weather. But is the yard sale going to be across the street too, or just the storage?
Nope. All the yard sales going to be across the street. So we have people donating tables. We have all kinds of volunteers. So what we're planning on doing is to drop off over the next couple of weeks. And then at that point, come that morning or the night before, obviously, we're going to be planning this in terms of tagging everything. But that morning, we set the tables up, we sell what we have to, and then we have someone coming in to dispose of what we don't sell.
Thank you.
So if you know anyone that, you know, needs any help or whatnot, we have things in the Valley Breeze, and we're going to be having the advertisements, you know, displayed within the town, as well in Lincoln.
This could be a good incentive, Mr. Mitchell, maybe to check some older closets. Pull some of the skeletons out.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. And last but not least, we have our annual Quebec trip presentation. Madame Brady is here with some students, and she will introduce them to the group, and we have a little slide presentation for the committee and the audience. Bonjour, Madame.
Bonsoir. Bonsoir.
Hello. Welcome.
Merci. Bonsoir, messieurs dames. Je suis là pour vous présenter notre voyage annuel à Québec. We're here to talk about our experiences in Quebec. I've got Kyle Jordan, Monique Chabert, and Miguel Hoyos. We're eighth graders that went on the trip this year.
Thank you. So our first slide will be Miguel talking about the Quebecois culture.
For the food, we, lots of maple syrup, crepes, and poutine. At the First Nation Reserve, we ate traditional foods like buffalo. We listened to the First Nations' traditional music, and we listened to the spoons at the Sugar Shack. We were introduced to the history of the First Nations and how they lived in the Canadian winters, and learned how our countries interacted in the past.
Excellent. Did, so when you came back, did you have any cavities with dentists? No? Okay. All right, good.
I'll be talking about the educational experiences we had during the trip. So it was a great experience to kind of practice what we've learned with Madame Brady and at McCourt with the French teacher. So Madame Brady, at least on our bus, and our tour guide, MG, they taught us new, like, words and phrases to say. And we got plenty of opportunity to speak with the Quebecois locals when we went shopping in, like, Old Quebec and just kind of walking around the city. Also, we learned about the history of the city and how it kind of affected the geography and the architecture. We saw a lot of great statues and buildings, like the Chateau Fontenac. And we saw the differences between their parliament and our, our government. So it was very interesting to kind of see the differences between our country and theirs.
Like, there's the fun activities and events that we had during our trip in Quebec. One of the things that we did was snowshoeing, which we walked two miles up a mountain. And once we got to the top, we saw an amazing view of, just like, the landscape. Then we went dog sledding and saw and experienced how the old generation used to, like, traverse through the wintry terrain. Then we went tubing at the snow park, which also has the Hotel de Glace. We went to the Copper Museum, where we made our own little creations out of copper. And the museum is run by a family. And we went to the Sugar Shack, where we, of course, had pancakes with the maple syrup. And we had maple syrup almost like a popsicle or a lollipop. And there we listened to spoons, and we danced to traditional music and some other songs that are well-known here as well.
I have a couple of questions. So, how was the weather?
Cold.
You know, it's funny, too, that you, you're the second presenter, and you mentioned food. Food brings people together, right? Good times, brings everybody together to bond and have fun. So, thank you. Mr. Demodica.
I just got one question for you on the snowshoeing. How does it compare in Quebec to Cumberland sidewalks, yeah, with the snowshoeing?
One big difference was, uh, there are really large snowbanks that, uh, you, if you stepped into, it'd kind of go up to almost like your knee. So that was, it was very fun. Nobody got hurt, which was good. Yeah. There are, there was a lot of falling, but nobody got hurt. So it was...
Excellent.
So we were held accountable to manage our own money while we were shopping and going around the city. And we were responsible to keep ourselves warm and to have all of our winter gear and to be prepared for the cold weather. And in the hotel, we stayed in a beautiful hotel. We had a great view. The background of the slide is the view from one of those hotel rooms. And we were accountable to keep our room clean and to wake up early and to be respectful to the other guests. And we had very high expectations placed upon us, but everyone came through. And it was a nice little glimpse into different countries and traveling around. It was, the trip was a wonderful experience. It was educational, and it was incredibly fun, and it gave us a nice opportunity to be independent. So thank you for the opportunity, and I hope it continues.
Excellent. Thank you.
Most of you have heard me say this before, that years later, I have students that come back and tell me about their experiences in Quebec. And many of you have taken your children. And really, they come back years later. We're talking juniors, seniors in college coming back after, after having a lot of travel experiences. And they will tell us that the highlight of their middle school years, the highlight of their Cumberland school experience was that trip to Quebec. We really, it goes so far beyond just going on a trip for a weekend. It really, truly is them building relationship, building relationship with, uh, outside of themselves, seeing how other people in other countries interact, that, that language is really real and vibrant and used on a day-to-day basis, and that independence that they have to have in order to just, you know, get going. And you're, you're, they're living with four of their best friends, three of their best friends in a, in a hotel room for a weekend. And it, it truly is transformational for a lot of them, and they carry that with them and bring that experience on. So we are working on next year's trip. We're slight change of dates for next year based on the hotel availability. But we had a great experience at a different hotel this year, and we want to continue that going. So we will, we'll continue to work with Jump Street. They're a phenomenal tour company, real shout-out to them, professional. The, the tour guides that they get and that spend the weekend with us are truly knowledgeable, energetic, and get these kids really excited about being there and traveling with us. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm Cora, and I help organize the trip over there. Our kids are truly appreciative of the opportunity to go on this trip. For many of them, it's their chance to get out of the country. Sometimes they're a little nervous being away from their families, but they appreciate being away and experiencing something outside of what we see every day in school. And I think for all the chaperones, too, we really like to see the kids have the opportunity to shine outside of the classroom. So we appreciate the opportunity to go every year, and they really, truly enjoy it and take away a lot of great learning experiences. So thank you.
How was the bus ride up and back?
It's very long, but the kids are very, very well behaved. So that's, that's good. We pack a lot of Motrin. We get through it.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard.
Sleep on the way back, so that, that trip is usually pretty quiet.
Thank you for the update.
Soon with a request for next year, so stay tuned.
Look forward to it. Have a good night. Any, any other questions from the... Oh, I apologize.
It's not a question. I just want to thank you and all the chaperones for putting it together and, and keeping parents informed. My son went on the trip this year, and he had a great time, just what you described. And so thank you very much. It's much appreciated. And also, Mr. Jordan, I can't believe it's been your brother did the same presentation. And it sticks out in my mind, because it was such a great presentation as well. I don't know how many years ago that was, maybe four years ago. Okay. So it's nice to see you.
Mr. Jordan, at first, when you came up, I thought maybe you were a student-teacher. Take that as a compliment. I didn't realize you were one of the attendees, so, thank you.
Jump, Jump Street is already recruiting from our student base.
Bongiano Comasta? Oh, that's Italian. Never mind. Thank you.
Also, nice job, everyone. Good job presenting.
Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's report, fiscal year 2018 budget update. We'll talk a little bit more about this later on within the agenda. Nothing else to add. Next item. Oh, I apologize. I apologize. No new update fiscal year 2018 budget. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, reports of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, there are no payment of bills tonight.
Mr. Demodica, why we have this pause? I would, I would like to recognize State Rep Jimmy McLaughlin. Thank you for coming to our meeting. We'll, public comment coming up in a little bit, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you.
That's what he looks like.
All right.
So there are no payment of bills.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, fiscal management subcommittee.
Fiscal has met twice since the last meeting, on March fifteenth and, and tonight, and we went over the proposed budget that the superintendent and the business manager have put together for the coming school year. We've discussed it at length in regards to some of the new items happening, new people that need to be hired. We have a hundred and twenty-two, I think it's new high school students coming in next year, and twenty-four, twenty-five new kids starting at North Cumberland Middle School as well. So we have to hire some new teachers, administrators, and staff. And it's a good budget, and I'll be making a motion later on in regards to it. But that's the only two items that we've dealt with in the last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, policy and procedures, subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorillo.
Policy didn't meet the other night. We took advantage of having the evening to ourself, and we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. We covered a lot of different policies. We covered the G six personnel policy, which we'll be voting on later on. That's the annual review of the policy to make sure there's any, if there's any changes we want to make before we start with contracts for all the non-unit personnel. We also discussed the G fourteen policy, which is the computer and electronic device acceptable use policy. If you remember, a few weeks ago, we amended the student policy regarding these devices. And this is just the, like, the sister bill, I mean, the sister policy, if you will, regarding staff. So we'll be also voting on that later on. We also had a long discussion about the school meal, school meal payment policy. As you all know, we've changed our policy since last year to no longer have the alternative lunch. We've also removed the children from the conversation of past due balances. And what has happened is we have a huge deficit in our school meal, uh, pop, um, school meal budget, around $40,000. So we are looking at increasing communication. We're also looking at maybe making some changes to the policy that would primarily affect the high school. That seems to be where the biggest problem is right now. And also some more collection efforts. So we'll be discussing that in a future meeting. And we also, Mr. Chandler introduced the new social media policy, which would affect students and personnel. And that was tabled, so we'll actually continue that conversation in the future.
Update. Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, achievement and communications, subcommittee update. Mr. Denon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee did not meet, has not met since our last meeting, so I have no update.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, comments from the public. Jimmy, step up to the microphone, state your name, your age, your weight. I'm just kidding, just kidding.
State Representative Jim McLaughlin, District fifty-seven, address Fifteen Garden Suite, District fifty-seven, Cumberland and Central Falls. I'm, I'm here tonight, as you probably know. We had a very busy night in finance tonight with the governor's proposed budget articles pertaining to the $250 million in funding. And with that said, this is something that's badly needed, you know? And I'd just like to get your input on a few things, because the Finance Committee will be holding meetings and, you know, subcommitting meetings. And I would look for recommendations from my local school, you know, district right here in Cumberland as to the appropriation of this money when I, or monies, I should say. You know, Superintendent Mitchell, Chairman, the people on the school committee, you, you have a very tedious job in trying to make ends meet, you know? And with the $250 million, you, you realize $80 million is already appropriated by the General Assembly for capital improvement. So I asked a question, Ty. They look at me like he's going to ask another question. But basically, I said, the total amount is probably... But basically, I said, total amount is probably 330 million per year.
Rep, do you have a pen and a pad on you?
Yes.
Start yelling out some projects that I need to get.
Okay. With that said, with the $80 million that is appropriated, and I'd like, really like your input on it, per year by the General Assembly, perhaps we could use this money for, or monies, you know, for IT purposes, for textbooks, for, you know, other things, with the appropriation of the $250 million, you know, which Cumberland will be getting 40%.
Rep, how, how about we set up a meeting?
Yep.
Superintendent, Business Manager?
Yeah.
And we can go through.
I would like your input though, you know, on it, Superintendent Mitchell.
And I also encourage the school committee to reach out to you directly.
Yeah, because during the coming days, we will be holding, you know, subcommittee meetings, and we really need your input, you know, I, I feel, you know? How can you represent school districts when, you know, they have no, no say? You know what I mean? And another thing was brought up tonight in reference to the funding for the charter schools, okay? It's going to be increased to 36%, you know? And I, I really have a problem with that, you know? Basically, I related to the mayoral academies that we have, you know, in Cumberland. I mean, they both represent, you know, doing a good job, but my main obligation is to, you know, our public schools. And a lot of people don't know it, but these are for-profits, privately owned, okay? And, you know, in reference to an increase of up to 36%, okay? In, in basically repairs, you know? For people, I should say, for companies like Civic Builders out of New York that actually own these properties, you know? That's taken, you know, I, I believe some of those, I want to see what their contribution is, but I, I really believe that our schools could use some of that money, you know what I mean? So that's another discussion for another time, but these are some of the things that were brought up tonight, you know? And the vetting process. So with that said, I look forward to working with you and getting your input, you know, on that. I believe the total number of mayoral academies we have in Cumberland right now, their total assets are $38 million, okay? That they own in the town of Cumberland. Okay, these buildings that they own, the town doesn't own them, the state doesn't own them, you know? So they, they've.
The builders own them, correct?
Basically, this is real estate that they own. And to use public funding, you know, to offset that cost, something to be discussed in the future. With that said, I just wanted to give you as an update and look forward to your recommendations. Thank you.
Rep, thank you. It's always a pleasure to have you at our school committee meetings, thank you. Next item on the agenda, was there any other public comment? I apologize. Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing, Reading of New Policies. Mr. Fiorillo.
Yes, so the first set of policies, social media policies are not being read into the record, they have not been approved at the policy subcommittee level. However, I would ask that the G6 Personnel Benefit Policy for non-unit administrative and support personnel, and also G14, the Computer Internet Electronic Device Acceptable Use Policy, be read into the record. We will be voting on those later on. And the E3 School Meal Payment Policy was tabled, so that does, does not need to be read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, Old Business, Discussion and or Vote to Approve Amended Policy. Mr. Fiorillo.
Uh, yes, G6 Personnel Benefit Policy for non-unit administrative and support personnel. This policy lays out the benefits and structures for all the employees that are not within the teachers' union or the non-certified union. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what that's actually, Icy, what's, what's it stand for? Independent, okay, thank you, just had a brain cramp. We made, did we make any, I'm sorry, Mrs. Vogel, did we make any changes to this policy other than minor? We made some minor changes, I don't even, I forget, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Vogel, would you like to step up to the microphone?
Yeah, if you could just explain, because I forget myself.
Good evening. I don't have the policy in front of me, but I can tell you that I know that we made a correction because I had mistakenly left out the assistant principals at the middle school, so we fixed that, that was one of the things that we did in the policy. Additionally, we provided employees who have been with the school department for more than 15 years with an extra week of vacation, so they'll now have five weeks, which is what the town has. So we tried to be, to look at, at some of the benefits that the town had. We added National Election Day as a holiday. We changed the co-share structure. There used to be a tiered structure where depending on the amount of money an employee made, they were, they were, I think, three or four different tiers. We've now made just two tiers, those under 70 would pay 17%, and those above will pay whatever the highest bargaining unit pays, or no less than 20%, which is a change. We additionally talked about moving to the 500,000 Plan for Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is a change because currently the administrators and everyone else under G6 pays, is the 250-500 Plan. And I think the only other thing we did was that we removed, there was a clause in there that was, that was identical to the teachers' union, where after 15 years and retiring, you could get 50% of your sick time paid out at $50 a day. We removed the requirement of the years and the retirement, obviously because it's a different kind of, and so we just said that any non-unit personnel, when they leave the school department, could get up to 90 days at $50. I think those were all the big changes.
I followed along, because I just remembered I had the policy with me, so that I can talk about it, but you got them all.
All right, great.
Better job than I could have done with the policy in front of me.
Mrs. Vogel, thank you.
And just, again, we review this policy every year to make any necessary changes. And at this time, I would make a motion to approve the G6 Personnel Benefit Policy.
Mr. Fiorillo, so this policy passed in your subcommittee?
Yes, I'm sorry, it passed 3 to 0.
Mr. Fiorillo recommends passage of G6. Do I have a second? Mrs. Friedman, a second? All in favor? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, New Business, Update on Kindergarten and First Grade Open Registration. Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman and School Committee members, we had our annual kindergarten registration last week on March 14th and 15th. And 188 kindergarten students were registered. And we have currently 42 students enrolled in preschools. So those preschool students will automatically be rolled up into the kindergarten group. So we have approximately, I think, you know, we anticipate that there'd be approximately 225 students as of this date who will be attending kindergarten in the fall. And we anticipate, you know, which is consistent with the pattern over the last several years, we anticipate approximately 100 additional students will register between now and the start of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any questions from the committee? Next item on the agenda, Discussion and or Vote to Approve/Request Consent to Join the Northwest School District Consortium. Mr. Mitchell, would you like to?
Sure, just a, a quick summary. We had a conversation a few weeks ago, I know that Mr. Demontica had brought this, this up. There is a consortium of schools in the north, northern part of the state, including Burriville, Lincoln, North Smithville, Smithfield. And these, these school districts have banded together with the goal of saving some money through, you know, a group purchased, through, through group purchasing power. Involved in this consortium are superintendents, special ed directors, business managers, assistant superintendents or curriculum directors, technology directors, and facilities directors. And the goal is to collaborate, to create cost efficiencies and share resources while improving the quality of education across all four districts. So the goal is to save some money, to collaborate with other districts. There is no cost to joining. We would need, if we were interested, we would need the approval of 75 or three of the four members in order for us to be considered as a member of this consortium. And I did share the bylaws with some members of the, of the committee. And I just think that this is something that we should consider because there could be some potential savings and some purchases down the road. One of the other, I think one of the big reasons why this came up, this provides an opportunity for us to borrow equipment that may be beneficial. In fact, I think the conversation that, you know, got this whole conversation started with the consortium was a conversation around changing the lights in the gym. And we needed to get some sort of a lift to be able to get at those lights. And we thought that perhaps one of the districts in the consortium may have a lift that we could borrow. And that's really what initiated the conversation. So I, I think that this is something that makes sense, and it could potentially be beneficial to the district. I know that I had a conversation with Dr. Frank Pallada, he was really the one who, I think was the mover behind establishing this consortium. And he believes that, I, I don't know the exact amount of money that they have saved since, you know, they established the consortium, but they, they have recognized some savings. And again, one of the advantages is doing things together. And, and I think this is the sort of thing that the state is supporting these, establishing these regional consortiums so that we could together save some money.
Excellent update, Mr. Mitchell, thank you. So pleasure the committee. Would anybody like to make a motion or discussion?
I would like to make a motion, we join the consortium if they accept us.
Mr. Demontica makes a motion for us to request to join the consortium? Do I have a second? Not everyone at once. Mr. Fiorillo takes a second. All, I'm sorry, Mrs. Goggan, yes?
I think it's great, I, for future, could we just have some clarification that we asked about last week about the CTE tuitions, just sometime in the next few weeks, about what exactly number two means for tuition for students from member districts, 5,000? Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Goggan. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, you can compile that and send it in. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and or Vote to Approve Amended Policies. Mr. Fiorillo.
G14, the Computer Internet Electronic Device Acceptable Use Policy is the policy that applies to faculty and staff. Originally, the, the original policies for, for these items, there was the student policy, which was I, or is I-2 and G14 for the employees. It was all, it was essentially the same exact policy, just in two different places. So what we've done is, since we've added punishments essentially for students, we wanted to make sure that was not in the staff policy. And so this policy is actually pretty straightforward. It hasn't changed very much. The only real difference is we have removed any, any reference to students or parental involvement, or any kind of, anything that would really apply to students. And I would just make a motion to pass this policy.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Mr. Fiorillo, Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion?
I'm sorry, just.
Go ahead.
Just did pass 3 to 0.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to pass G14. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, E3 School Meal Payment Policy.
This policy was tabled, so no vote is necessary.
Further discussion? Next item on the agenda, Discussion and or Vote to Approve the First Reading of the New Policies. Both of these were tabled, I believe, correct, Mr. Fiorillo? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and or Vote to Approve Resolution SCR 2018-04, School Construction General Obligation Referendum, in which I can read to you. So this is, this was passed by Lincoln in Smithfield, I believe, a few other communities, I cannot recall off the top of my head. Whereas Governor Gina Raimondo and General Treasurer Seth Magaziner have proposed that the General Assembly place a referendum on the November ballot authorizing the approval and issuance of a $250 million general obligation bond to support the renovation of existing schools in the construction of new schools. That the Cumberland School Committee respectfully requests the General Assembly to support Article 5 of H 2018-7200, that would place a referendum before the voters incurring debt of $250 million for the renovation of existing and the construction of new public schools. I would like to see this passed tonight. Pleasure the committee, questions or a motion? Mr. Demontica makes a motion to approve passage of SCR 2018-04. Do I have a second? Mr. Dennett? I, I, I apologize, yes, I meant to say I skipped over a few. Okay. Oh, let me go back and read them, thank you, Mr. Dennett. Whereas a report by the Rhode Island School Building Authority identified that an investment 2.2 billion is needed to address school infrastructure deficiencies, and whereas, the same report states that to make school facilities at a minimum warm, safe and dry would require an investment of 627 million. And whereas, the average age of school buildings in Rhode Island is approximately 60 years. And whereas, according to Rhode Island General Laws 16-2-17, A, each student, staff member, teacher and administrator has a right to attend and/or work at a school which is safe and secure, in which is conducive to learning. And whereas, Rhode Island schools should be as energy efficient as possible. I'd read the next paragraph, and I'm going to skip over to, no, I, thank, thank you, Mr. Dennett, and we'll finish it up. Thank you, Mr. Dennett has a second. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Dennett. Rep, thank you for your support as well, I can see you shaking your head. I'm sorry, nodding, nodding your head, shaking your head up and down. It's a very critical school committee tonight, especially sitting next to Mr. Fiorillo, he keeps me right on track. Next item on the agenda, I apologize, discussion and or vote on FY 2019 School Budget. Mr. Demontica, if you could.
Mr. Chairman, the Fiscal Subcommittee held two meetings about this budget proposal that the superintendent and the business manager gave us. I think most of our questions were answered. We do have another 4% ask with the town, you know, it supports education and moving us forward. We have many positions, I think we have of this budget 1.3 million. We have many positions. I think we have of this budget, one point three million dollars that just goes to new staff that we have to hire because of the enrollment, step, step pay raises, which are covered by state law. So we're asking the town for the four percent. It's about eighteen new positions in this, in this district that are sorely needed to help the achievement. And it passed upstairs in a three to zero vote. It's our recommendation from fiscal that we pass this budget in the amount of, and send it to the finance director in the amount of sixty-nine million fourteen dollars and nine hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-nine million fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. That is our recommendation. I would put that in a motion to the full committee for a passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demonic. Mr. Demonic is suggesting making a motion for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen school budget. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. Mr. Denon, please.
Correct. No, I think we should do it tonight. If we're going to vote on it tonight, if we fiddle off till next week, then we can do it next week. It's up to the chairman if we're going to vote on this tonight.
Mr. Adams? So the, the budget needs to be modified on a line item. It was based on stipends being, for the school committee being higher than what they are. Could we approve this budget upon the modification of our business manager, changing the stipends and then sending them to the town? Or should we adjust the figure right now minus the stipends?
I hope I'm answering your question. If, if a committee member at this point, now that you have a motion and a second, wanted to move to amend the motion to approve, to reflect the actual amounts of the stipend as opposed to what had previously been proposed, but rejected, am I getting that right? Then a motion could be made in that respect to amend the first motion, a second, if that was desirable, and then a vote on the amendment. And then, once you vote on the amendment, then you go back and vote on the first motion as amended.
Mr. Adams, you're going to have to walk me through this one. So.
Seven thousand fifty dollars. So this is on page thirty and it's the top line. It's currently proposed at twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And I think we're, I think my motion is to make it sixteen thousand two hundred. So I, I make a motion to do that.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to adjust the budget in reference to, to amend the earlier motion. Fiorello, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Mr. Fiorello?
I would make a motion to take that seven thousand and fifty dollars and put it into the line item for repairs of playgrounds on page thirty-seven, which is currently at zero dollars, and put the seven thousand fifty dollars there.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to amend, to move that seven thousand fifty dollars towards playgrounds, playgrounds repairs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
They adjusted the salary of the proposed pathway position, lowered the amount by how much was it, Mr.? It was lowered down twenty-five hundred dollars. Do we have a page number on that one, by chance, Mr. Pignan? Alright, so I would make a motion that we adjust the salary, the proposed salary of the pathway director and lower that amount by twenty-five hundred dollars and also move that money to the playground line item.
Mr.? Thank you, Mr. Adams. So Mr. Demonic makes a motion to amend page thirty-seven, pathway position.
Page twenty.
I'm sorry.
Page twenty.
Twenty.
Pathway director's position, lower the amount by twenty-five hundred dollars and.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Pathway position on page twenty, minus twenty-five hundred and move that twenty-five hundred to the playground line item for a positive addition of twenty-five hundred. For a total of nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Demonic.
I think it's a good budget. I think they did a real good job, the business manager and the superintendent, putting this together. We have some challenges coming up next year with the more students coming in. Items like security that we've dealt with recently and it all costs money. And but more important, we bring more positions into this district to move the children forward. I think the town council should support us. Hopefully, the mayor will as well and we get the full four percent that we need. I don't want to come back here and cut after they've made a decision about the children. You know, this is moving the district forward, so it's a good job. You know, we're not filled here with two hundred and fifty people here tonight because of it, because we've worked hard last year and, you know, we're moving forward. So I would urge my other fellow members here to vote to approve this.
Mr. Demonic, are you making a motion?
I already made.
Oh, a motion's already made.
Motion's been made as amended.
Second has already been made. Yes, I would like, I would like to discuss a few things. So upon approval of this budget, it will go to, before, before the first Monday in April, the school committee shall, school committee shall submit the estimates for capital and operating expenditures to the finance director at the town by the first Monday. Within the first two weeks of April, discussions with the mayor and finance director to review the proposed school committee budget. After the, around the seventeenth or eighteenth, my dates are a little bit off, I apologize. The finance director shall submit his or her recommendations to the mayor no later than the third Monday in April. There we go. As provided in section eight oh three of the charter. The mayor shall review the recommend, recommendations of the finance director and shall make such changes in the various expenditures he or she sees fit, provided that the mayor shall not have the authority to change any item in the school expenditure request except the overall total amount and submit the budget to the council no later than the second Monday in May. There's a few more dates after that. What I'm getting to is that I believe, I think it's important for this, for the committee in the public, parent students, to support the schools in this request of the town to help fund our budget that this administrator put together. Mr. Denon?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the budget. Seven hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars is due to enrollment. Positions needed to be added for enrollment, so that's nine high school positions. One middle school tech support position, which will be split between McCourt and North, and one sixth grade at North Cumberland teacher. The, the rest of the increases for positions are to deal with, well, not deal with, but to help achievement and in addition to the pathways coordinator. I think it's just important to point that out and that, the total of that is seven hundred and five thousand two hundred and sixty-two. And I believe these are, these are just the salaries. And so the first part is basically required. That's seven hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four is required because we have more students. In addition, we have step raises, which are required by law. I forget what the total there is. I believe it's six, six hundred thousand. So we're looking at one point two, one point three million of required additional spending. And where we're trying to move the district forward is the seven hundred and five thousand for these positions. Special ed coordinator, elementary vice principal, psychologist, assistant principal at McCourt, and academic coaches. I just thought it's important to state what we're trying to do here with this budget. The one thing that's not addressed in the budget is the high school start time. It's disappointing that we're not doing that. I, I suppose we could come back and, and try to make it work. I don't know how that would work. Like, I don't know if, if, if we had a dollar figure of X, I don't know if we would have to find the money somehow. So that's a little, that's the disappointing part.
I agree with you, Mr. Denon. Thank you. For your comments, Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to add, in addition to all the items that Mr. Denon just listed, we are also increasing mental health supports in the district, which I think is also very, very important to mention.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel?
First, I have a retirement. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Ellen McHugh, paraprofessional at Cumberland Hill Elementary School, effective June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, after sixteen years of service. I'm going to do them all and then.
What's normal, Mrs. Vogel?
I have one resignation. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Kelly Odette, custodian at McCourt Middle School, effective March nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Leave of absence. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of absence of Elizabeth Langlois, grade six teacher at North Cumberland Middle School with an anticipated leave date of June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, through the end of the seventeen eighteen school year. And lastly, one appointment. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Victoria Almas, reading specialist at North Cumberland Middle School with an effective date of April sixth, twenty eighteen, through the end of the school year. She is a step five. This is a budgeted position. As you know, we've, the reading specialist at North Cumberland Middle School left in mid-September and we have been working very hard to try and find someone to replace it. And we finally, thankfully, feel like we have really, we've found a great person. So this is a budgeted position. And that's it, I'm sorry.
Oh, excellent. Mrs. Vogel presented four personnel recommendations. Do I have a motion to accept these by the committee? Mr. Denon makes a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Second by, I apologize. Mrs. Friedman, all in favor? Against? Passes, seven zero. Thank you.
Very much.
Ms. Vogel, next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone? Mrs. Goggins? Oh, I thought I saw you here. I apologize. You're typing. Mr. Demonic?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Deb Malcolm and her staff up at Cumberland Hill in regards to the STEM program they put on. I came with my wife. I saw Mrs. Goggins there. I saw Mr. Fiorello and his wife there. It was a good time and a lot of businesses and came out to support it as well and display things and it was a great job and it was well deserved. Thank you.
Mrs. Malcolm? Made aware of that. Mr. Fiorello?
Yeah, I just want to second what Mr. Demonic just said. It was a great time. The kids were really enthusiastic. They were leading the demonstrations. It was, it was just great to see the kids taking such an active role. Also, if, if we all remember, a few weeks ago in fiscal, we discussed possibly supporting a new floor in the gymnasium at North Cumberland Middle. I made a point of going over there last week, I believe. Thank you to Mrs. Coughlin. That floor is in horrible, horrible condition. And I hope that we bring that back forward into fiscal so we can discuss it further and possibly try to get something done over the summer with that. Yeah, it's, it's bad. I spoke with the, I, I spoke with the phys ed teacher there and it's just, it's an awful, awful, that should not even be in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Anyone else? Mrs. Friedman?
So I just want, excuse me, to recognize the administration at the high school and at North Cumberland Middle School and at McCourt for their support of the student walkout on March fourteenth and personally to thank Mrs. Coughlin because my daughter was part of the team that wanted to lead this and really working with the kids to make, to try not to make this a political statement, but to try to memorialize and remember, you know, the students from Florida. And in, despite it being a delayed attendance day, I, I think we made it all work and you made it work. And I know it took a lot of effort to make that happen. So I just want to thank everyone for giving, allowing our students to have a voice and to show some leadership and, and to let people know that this was a student-led effort. You know, this wasn't administration-led effort. The administration supported it, but it was because students spoke up and said, this is something that we want to do. And I know for one, my daughter, I think she'll remember this for the rest of her life. So, thank you.
Mrs. Friedman, thank you. I'd like to expand on that a little bit. So I did attend the walkout at the high school and I was trying to gauge how many kids. It was eight hundred. And they, they rolled down off of the steps and outside very respectfully and determined. And they lined up outside and they made speeches and it was, it was a nice event to attend. It wasn't administrators yelling. They knew exactly what they wanted to say, what they wanted to do and how they wanted to stand proud on what they support. So, excellent. Mr. Fiorello?
I just wanted to extend our thanks, or my thanks, to the police department for supporting the walkout and ensuring that all the kids were going to be safe during the, during the walkout.
Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session after? Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Pleasure the committee. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.